Good evening and welcome to the panel Select Board Meeting, the regular meeting Thursday, October ninth, two thousand fourteen. On the agenda, we have Agenda Approval, Approval of the Minutes, ten to fourteen, Warrants, Mail, Road Foreman's Monthly Board Meeting, Burrington Road Patch Blacktop Bid Opening, Road Salt, Old Business, Mike George, EMC, for the Local Emergency Operations Plan, Tax Sill Negotiations at the Burdick Mobile Home Park, and Personnel of the Transfer Station, and any new business. What's your pleasure on this, gentlemen?
I can motion accept it.
Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the Minutes for Thursday, October second, two thousand fourteen. All those in favor? We have two warrants this week. One warrant is for six thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, which is payroll. And our second warrant is for twelve thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and three cents. Big item on that is West Oil Diesel Fuel, and the eleven hundred dollars for the Oak Hill Cemetery, et cetera. Those are the two warrants. What's your pleasure? Second? Henry? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a letter from the Dorset School. They're having a e-waste collection event on Saturday, October eighteenth, at the Dorset School, from nine a.m. until noon. It's hosted by the Dorset Teachers Association. And you could bring a, the money is to raise for the Technology Fund of the Dorset School. A wide variety of electronics and accessories will be accepted, including computers, laptops, desktops, and servers, printers, ink cartridges, toner cartridges, televisions of all types, monitors, all types, UPS battery backup, stereo equipment, satellite dishes, any size. Game consoles, Wii, Playstation, et cetera, digital cameras, cell phones, BlackBerries, MP3 players, small household appliances, and more. So if you have any of those electrical and electronic items, and you'd like to properly dispose of them, it's at the Dorset School on Saturday, October eighteenth, from nine a.m. until noon. We also have a letter from our Animal Control Officer, Toma May Concern. Armin Vincent will be on vacation out of the state from Sunday, October twelfth through the twenty-fifth. Can be contacted but unavailable to transfer or physically go on a call. And that was your mail.
Question, do we have a backup on the Animal Control Officer?
No, we only have one animal.
Okay. Okay.
If that should happen, what's the next step? Anybody know?
We...
What is the word, tough?
Well, really, I don't know what we do in this situation. I've never...
Well, we should know. We should, since it come up, I guess.
I mean, we did have a situation where we, I think we then called the Constable and the Health Officer, Jim Gilbert.
Well, if that works, that's fine.
Well, it doesn't work.
It doesn't work?
Oh.
It does, that's, that's...
I thought it would work.
That's it. I mean, it's not the Constable's responsibility, nor is it the Health Office's responsibility. So I think this is something that, in my opinion, I think we should look at this a little further, and not only have an Animal Control Officer, but I thought we had a backup that somebody was saying to, that if the Animal Control Officer was not available, I mean, does that ring a bell with you, Linda?
That situation since changed.
Since changed.
There isn't any place available to put this animal once it's gathered up. I mean, someone actually made a recommendation to put a couple of crates in the town office, and that's just not feasible.
Well, can we hire someone from out of town that cares for dogs and et cetera, boards dogs, boarding kennel, we have a boarding kennel somewhere down here in Powder.
The...
Not in that northwest area.
The new one?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a boarding, or more of a, like a doggy daycare type thing. I don't know enough about it.
I don't know anything about it. Well, if there isn't one...
...grooming and boarding on the side, so I think they do boarding too.
Well, I mean, I don't want to say we go down to Bennington, or down to somewhere else, if we got someone local that would step in if we made the call.
I'm not sure if, if, I'm not sure if they want to take in strays. I think, I think what you have to realize here is, the majority of the time when the ACO gets a stray, number one, they're in serious need of care, whether it be fleas, porcupine quills, injuries, temperament, whatever. This is not something that most kennels will just readily go, oh yeah, sure, we'll take them, without, you know, I mean, there's, there's the kennel cough has to be considered, they have to have shots, you know, because if they're boarding dogs, or people are paying for vacation and stuff, they don't want to bring in strays that they don't know if they've been vaccinated, rabies, they have no history of these dogs. It's really a gray area.
Well, I guess the answer to that is to ask.
I suppose, Linda, did, did you contact them at all, or?
No.
I mean, if they want to, you know, see, what you just said, I have no problem.
It was enough dealing with the situation at hand until after five that day.
Right.
It's very disruptive for my own work.
I know that in the previous boards, there was talk about a temporary shelter over in the Transfer Station area. But again, I think it came down to who...
Well, you're going back to the same problem.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, somebody's still got to care for the dogs.
Still got to care for it.
Somebody actually has to go pick them up when there's a phone call. That's the first big issue. You guys have to realize that you need somebody to call that's willing to go pick up a stray animal, and knows how to handle a stray, because some of them are, some of them are just, they escaped from somebody's house, and they've been running for a day, and they need food and water. Second, there is some money in an animal shelter account to start building something, but it's not a lot of money. And that's why that never went any farther than that with any other board, because there's only X amount of dollars. So you still need to figure out the person that's going to make the first initial pickup, and then worry about where you're going to bring them.
Well, that's why, that's why I thought that...
Because that boarding facility is not going to go pick up your strays.
Well, or is there someplace that will do that? I don't, you know...
Well, what I'd like to put out there, too, is if there's anyone in the town that could assist our Animal Control Officer, or would be interested in assisting our Animal Control Officer in any way, shape, or form, for instance, she's on vacation to pick up the slack for a couple of weeks, she may be called, she may not be called, but if you have any interest on dealing with this, could you please contact Linda at the town office, and at least get, you know, on a list, and, and help out the Animal Control Officer? Yes, Jim?
I have assisted the past four Animal Control Officers when they needed assistance in one way or another. I, I'm more than glad to do it in my position as Health Officer, okay? But for me to be called at six-thirty at night and say, can you go up to Great Fields Kennel and pick up two dogs with mange and porcupine quills, and find something to do with them, is like...
Like, what are you, yeah, like, what are you going to do?
Forget it!
Right, right, that's...
You know, because I've got a dog who is very healthy, and, and I want to keep him that way. And it was just like, no, I can't do this. I, I, you know, I cannot do this on that much notice tonight. What we really, really, truly need as a municipality is an impoundment area. We need to have a town dog pound.
Okay, and we had discussed this before, and I think one of my greatest concerns about that is, number one, has to be water, it has to be state standards, it has to be heated, you know, yeah, all of the above.
You know, I hear you, I know where you're coming from, but, but we need it, you know. If we took...
Bennington don't even have one.
If we took all the money...
They got more money than Powder does.
If we took, if we took all the money that we have paid out to this kennel, and that kennel, and that kennel, and the other kennel, and put it all together, we could probably operate our own facility with the dog control officer and a backup, and I would be willing to do the backup if I had someplace to take the damn dogs to. I don't, I don't want to bring them to my house. I don't have a place for them.
Again, it comes down to a place, too. Where are you going to put it? Because there's no water at the Transfer Station, you know.
What's the pay?
I, I don't know off the top of my head what the Animal Control Officer is, I don't have that information.
I think if you say, what's the pay, I bet you I can find somebody.
Well, finding somebody is one thing, it's, it's, I think...
No, I mean qualified person. I don't mean...
Okay, that's, that's fine, and...
No, I'm not talking about...
I totally understand that, but we're, even if we have another person, we're at that same juncture of, what do we do with the dog at six-thirty at night when...
On who, who you find to do it, because some people are willing to put them on their own, they are set up to do that.
Yeah. I think we should, we should discuss it with, with, in the meeting, with the Animal Control Officer, and find out, you know, how often are we, are we boarding dogs? I mean, how many dogs, I mean, we, do we know, we don't have any of that information to, to come up with something, and I think we should schedule a meeting, and...
And for years, you know, Karen has been running this fund and collecting money.
That's not a lot of money, Jim.
And there's not a lot of money in there, but there is some money that's been donated by people from the town to make a dog kennel for the town.
It's not enough, anywhere near, Jim, enough money.
I'm sure. I still see, then you have to have the care, I mean, obviously, someone's got to be there at least once a day, or twice a day.
Couple times, you can't just put them in, you have to take them out.
But I want to, you know, I want to know how many, how often is this occurring, you know what I mean, and...
Well, I think...
I mean, I've heard good, I've, you know, I haven't heard, you know, I've heard a lot of good things about our Animal Control.
The only thing I'm looking for is this, almost can guarantee, if our dog officer is gone...
For two weeks, we're going to get a call.
We're going to have a problem. And I don't have, if someone would call me, I'd say, duh.
Well, I think we all would at this point, because we...
Same thing, we don't know what to do, so we need to try our very best to have some kind of answer, or see if we can find someone that will, I mean, I don't blame anyone that doesn't want to, you know, bring a dog with quills, and et cetera, or fleas, or whatever, to their, to their, put them in their doghouse. I mean, that's foolish. Okay.
In my particular case, my dog sleeps in the house.
Yeah.
And I don't have anything else where I could...
But I think that we probably can find someone, and I, I'll see.
Well, all right, then...
I'll see what I can...
See what you could do, Henry.
I really will.
In the meantime...
Because I know that if we have a problem, whoever has that problem gets very upset.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, and that's why I think that...
They get very upset, you know, they're asking a question, and, here's, what do we do with it?
Ronnie, you have anything you want to add?
I don't want to be in the dog business, that's what you mean.
Well, I, that's...
I have no idea that.
Yeah.
I know that we supposedly here, we got a contract with Great Fields, so if we've got somebody who can take the dog there, if they reject the dog, then I don't know what the next move is, if they reject it for some sickness or something.
Okay.
But I do know that.
In this particular case, that occurred a couple of nights ago...
It was to the vet, right, Linda?
It was, it was, it was a person from the town, it was not our Animal Control Officer.
She had the okay to do it.
Yeah.
She did have the okay to do it. If, if the dog is rejected from the kennel because they think it has mange or something, it goes to the vet, it goes to Mount Anthony, so, so, you just need a body to transport these dogs.
Okay.
Right now, for two weeks, to cover when our Animal Control Officer is out of town.
Okay, well...
Because this won't be the first time, and at least then everybody will know, hey, listen, you know, this is what we doing, very good.
Also, too, I'd like to schedule a meeting with the dog officer, maybe around, she's gone to, what, the twenty-fifth? And that brings us...
And she might, she might even have an answer for us, so, you know.
Right. Twenty-fifth is a Saturday, that brings us into November, so maybe the first week in November, we could ask her to come, and in the meantime, Henry, you're going to research what you can.
Yeah, I'm going to see if I can find someone that'll at least transport them. I don't know where, but...
Okay.
They'll pick them up anyways, and...
All right, great.
Right.
Okay, moving along, Casey, Road Foreman.
Good, how are you?
Good, pull a mic up there so everybody can hear your voice.
I think the first item is your bids.
Yes, right here. Do you want to grab those and open them up?
Cool, it's a...
Well, thanks.
Okay, we've got two bids here for Burrington Road Patch Blacktop, right? Correct?
That, those don't include the apron, I think there may be stipulations in both of those, I think, it's supposed to be, anyway.
Okay.
They don't fight for a ton, they could do the apron too, if you're so chuffed.
Okay, do I open both of them, or do one at a time, or does it matter? Okay. Make sure I want to do this, right?
Both got to be red.
They both will be red, okay, this is from Bedoin Paving in Bennington. Patching, in a roadway patching by machine of twelve separate areas comprising eight thousand and one square feet. Work to include all prep for paving by others, that would be us, right? Then started herein, fine grade and roll based material, installation of two inches of bituminous concrete in one course, or courses, second of, of two inches of top. Of bituminous concrete, is that what they call it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. This bid is based on a hundred and ten tons of asphalt, and the asphalt used above this figure will be charged at the rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per ton. The total price for the lump sum item is sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Our second bid here is from WW Contracting, on Barber's Pond Road in Powder, Vermont. Proposal job location Burrington Road, Powder, Vermont. Job description, paving and patching, fine grading, one hundred and two tons of blacktop. Material, equipment, and labor at a cost of twenty-three thousand two hundred dollars. I'd like to pass these around for the individual board members to take a look at, give them some time to see exactly what's going on. And I know while they're doing that, our new truck should be arriving fairly soon, I understand.
New truck should be delivered to the dealer next week at some point, and then it'll be five to six weeks, it's wax, getting the body, the hydraulics, and all the particulars on it.
Now, do we, do we pick the truck up and take it over there, or?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we pick it up and take it over there.
Well, we go down there first, get the bill of sale...
Right, right.
Back down, cut check, taking the registration...
Maybe I'm not seeing something.
Insurance.
Here we do the...
We take the truck down to...
Prep. Are they going to do all the prepping here?
Well, that's what it doesn't say, that, on that bid.
Okay, all right, all right, just, okay, I just wasn't sure if I was reading it right.
On the two bids, I guess the question being, and I don't know if you have the answer to this or not, Casey, one is that we do all the prep work, I think Bedoin stated that, that we do all the prep work. The other one says equipment, labor, and, you know, does that include the prep work, or is that what they're still doing, the prep work?
The prep work that was discussed with the both contractors is, is that I dig out the trenches.
Okay, good. That's all we need to know.
So I will ask the board, what's your pleasure on this?
Casey, do you need to see those bids?
Did you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just heard them.
Okay, would you like to look at them, just, um...
No, it's pretty, pretty self-explanatory.
You're pretty comfortable with them, right? Okay. And one's a hundred and ten tons of asphalt, and one's a hundred and two tons of blacktop.
Very close.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I think it's something we need to do.
Yeah. Are they going to do it right away? No, I thought, I don't need it. Are they going to...
That's the...
What was the, what was the discussion? You follow me?
Mm-hmm.
The discussion that I had with them is if, they, they both have work, but both of them could fit it in, they said.
Okay.
Not necessarily at that date, because it's depending on the weather.
And when they shut...
I understand.
Plan is still open, but it'll be open till probably the second week of November or so.
Okay. I make a motion, we go with a little bidder.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, all right, so, there we go. Do you want these, Linda? Okay.
Those there. Bodwin Paving also finished our paving, it was last, last week.
Are you happy with it?
They did an excellent job.
They did?
We're almost, have almost finished filling the shoulders, going along the shoulders. A little bit more on Burrington Road, it's got to be done, but we're just about out of gravel, so we're going to try to put up some gravel tomorrow, so, tomorrow, Monday, maybe Monday because it rained too hard.
All right.
And as for the crack ceiling, I discussed with the gentleman that's Costello, that's going to be doing that. They indicated to me they needed a five-day window, and they'd like to start at seven or eight o'clock, and just blast it right out, and we had days where there, it probably could have happened, but not to give five days' advance notice, and the dude was still on the ground and that kind of thing, so he told me that he would hold that price till the spring.
Okay.
So as soon as it warms up, and everything dries out, and...
We could be like first on the list?
We can do it, anyway.
He'd just come right up and do it, yeah.
At the same price?
Yep.
I hate to be a stickler about this, but could you just get that in some form of writing?
Sure.
Okay, have him just say that he will honor that price due in, in spring of two thousand fifteen?
Sure.
Okay, that, just, so there's no question, or...
Well, the good, the good part is, is when we budget, we all know that, that money is spent.
Right, right, okay.
Per size.
And I guess we'll move, are, is, are you, you have more, or should we move to the road salt?
Yeah. Was there an issue with the road salt?
You just needed to tell them whether or not you secured it.
Yeah, how'd you make out?
Oh, I secured two different companies, I tried to secure with a third, but the company will not take on any new customers.
Okay, what are the two companies that you secured?
Cargill and American Rock Salt.
Okay. And they're both adequate to supplies?
We actually bought eighty ton of salt so far, and the only issue is really beautifully dry, the problem is it's really fine, and I talked with the gentleman that delivered it, and I guess there's different places where they can actually dig to get it, because it's all inside of a building, so he's going to try to get us the course of stuff that he can get, because most of it's, you know... Table salt.
So we have, so you purchased eighty?
Got eighty tons so far.
Okay.
And we're going to haul some more down to the warehouse, and I'm going to probably get, I'm going to try to get three hundred ton down there.
Okay.
And that way, if I can keep eighty ton at the shop, we'll at least have three hundred ton of reserve.
Okay.
Good.
All right. Anything else?
American Rock Salt, I think is, I think it may be twenty more cents a ton, but the thing about that is, is I can have them dump it right off at the warehouse, because they just drive, they drive right by there, where the Cargill Salt comes and rolling.
Okay. Good.
Great.
Anything else to add to your report?
Tools, how are you making out with tools? Got a bunch of tools, just, I'm just, I'm just waiting on the bill to be paid, so that, we need a toolbox, actually, to put them in.
Okay, that's a good thing.
So, credit card limit was only two thousand dollars, and we didn't spend up to that, but it's going to be more, it's like seven, eight hundred dollars for toolbox.
Okay.
And we still need that one-inch drive air wrench for our tires, and a couple of miscellaneous things to...
But you're coming along on it.
Yeah, when you buy the, when you buy the, the whole set, it doesn't come with any of the racks, you stick the sockets on it, so I'll get a bunch of those racks so that tells if there's a socket missing.
Right, good.
And the status from the new truck?
We, we went over that, he said it'll be here.
Should be here next week, or it should be, Delirious, hopefully, he said, next week.
You're probably reading the bids.
Yeah, and that goes, like I say, goes the swax after that.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
That's okay. Old Business, Mike George, for the emergency, why don't you step right up here, Mike, or, is there a chair up there, Casey?
I'll give this right back to you, I guess I get it. Be careful on that.
I have that right there, I'm going to just walk through.
Couple weeks ago I was in, and had what they call the LEOP, Local Emergency Operation Plan, adopted by the town. Lo and behold, there's another part to it, it's called NIMS, which is National Incident Management System. The only thing this does, this has to be amended with the other one, it basically clarifies that if there's an emergency in the state of Vermont, the town of Powder will work basically with the same rules as the rest of the state. It's all, they want everybody working on the same page, and we need this page here adopted, so it can be dated, and then the LEOP get handed into the state. Basically, all this says is, that's the National Incident Management System, NIMS, is the basics for all incident management in the town of Powder, whereas Homeland Security Detective, by directed to Secretary of the Department of Homeland Security, develop and administrate a national incident management system. And it says, it goes in the town of Powder, and I filled out the bottom, because Nelson signed the other one, he's the chairman, apparently, and he's the one that has signed it, so now I filled it in, is now therefore I Nelson Brown, now the town of Powder, by virtue of authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of the state of Vermont, do hereby establish the National Incident Management System, NIMS, as the town of Powder standard for incident, incident management, and then he has to sign it. Basically, if the board gives the okay to sign it, I guess he can pop in and sign it anytime, and then they can take care of it. Right? Okay.
Okay, so...
Anybody want to read it?
Do we need a motion on this to sign?
Has to be.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to sign.
Has to be adopted.
Second it?
Second it?
Yeah.
All those in favor to sign the letter, say aye. Aye. All right.
I'd like to ask also that copies of those get sent to the two fire departments and the...
Yeah, they all get them in Rushy Spud and School.
Great.
And we'll let every copy here as well.
Yep, I tried finding a new one, but Linda's got it.
All right. Everything else good, Mike?
Everything else is good.
Alright, well, thanks for keeping us up to date.
Yeah, that one's right here. This is the template.
Okay. So this one, you said it's good to go then?
Yeah, just got put. Right here, you got put one of the date, this date was for this one. That's good to go.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Few days.
Alrighty, yeah, I'll stop by.
Uh next up, the tax sale negotiations at the Burdick Mobile Home Park.
Hi, hi, I do have someone interested um in a mobile home in the Burdick Park that we will become owners of as of tomorrow from a tax sale. Unless something changed from today to tomorrow, which I will check with our attorney and so, but I think um money and.
Could you turn that around?
Personal, people's personal business is going to be discussed, so. I'm hoping yes.
Okay, great.
As we did last time.
Right, uh is there anything else before we go into executive session um that anybody else would like to bring up?
It won't take long.
Um looking with motion.
Make that motion.
All in favor say aye, aye. It will be in executive session.
I'm gonna go on the front row?
Yep, it won't be that long.
Yes, we're gonna reconvene. Okay, uh we're out of executive session and um uh we're looking for a, a motion at this time.
Motion to re-accept uh Stuart Glass and I forgot her name already. Melissa, uh option on this mobile home that we have down the uh trailer park, which we will own tomorrow. We don't own it yet, but we'll own it tomorrow. And uh we've come to an agreement that they'll pay us uh before fourteen days, fourteen days or less. They'll have, take possession of the property. We'll be done with it. In the meantime, we're gonna get a, we'll talk to the constable and have them notify, uh put up a no trespassing. Notify the people who were there before are no trespass.
You, you wanna add the uh the price and et cetera? The deal?
Uh the, the price is five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars plus he's paid the taxes, plus he's paying, uh it's behind already on the lot rent a month, this month I guess, so he's gonna pay that.
So every, everything will be brought to a zero balance.
And clean it up.
Okay, the motion has been made. Henry seconds it. Call a vote, all in favor say aye. As opposed? Congratulations. And now I believe uh once again, we're looking, I'm looking for a motion the next on the agenda.
Motion to go into executive session over personnel at the transfer station.
Second it?
All in favor to go into executive session to discuss uh personnel issue, say aye. And uh will we be coming back from this or with a, a decision? Probably not, okay.
I don't think so. That's up to you.
Alright, so then uh once we go into executive session for the sake of CAT TV, that will be it, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Banner.
Thank you very much.